Hello, everyone. My name is Farmer Tim Selden, President of the Montessori Foundation. I've just come in from the fields and I have two small dogs running around, jumping. But welcome to the weekly Montessori Town Meeting. We're really happy to see you again and come to the end of another hectic week, I expect, for all of us. So let me hand it off to my colleague, John Wolfe, who will organize this with our initial check-ins. How are we all doing?
Yeah, since we have such a relatively small group, yeah, we just have a few people. So anybody want to give us an update, how they're doing, a success story, a need, anything you want to, a question? This is, these are very open-ended meetings, but we always like to invite people to sort of check in to give us an update about how they're doing, how their students are doing, how their parents are doing, how their schools are doing, any insights since we last talked?
We had a lot of change. We actually got our PPP loan, which was very exciting. We also got, yes, very exciting, we also have the state looking at reopening. It is doing stage one this afternoon, except for our county is one of the ones not. And that comes with it a ton more paperwork. So last night I was looking at CDC, EPA, OSHA, Department of Health, Baltimore County Department of Health. Wow, it's a lot. And that's not even what the state regulations out there coming out at the beginning of next week.
Lisa, are you located again?
In Baltimore County.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, top of the Baltimore Beltway. So it's a lot to go through and it's, it's a lot, but it's good and we're looking at getting back on track and the staff is doing great and the parents are doing exceptionally well. And so are the kids. The kids look fantastic on the Zooms. So and the parents are holding on, the teachers are pretty tired, we're all pretty tired, but, but we're doing well.
Good, good. I'm glad, good. Good to see you again, Lisa. Glad you're, always glad you can make it. So you know, with all this paperwork you're doing with all these agencies in your next life, you can be a really brilliant bureaucrat if you wanted to.
Indeed. Oh, you know what I'm going to do in my next life? I was looking at different options for disinfecting and all the parameters we may have to meet. So two nights ago, I was reading a slew of scientific studies that were actually fascinating and I was tickled I could read them and understand them. So there was that. I'm getting all kinds of new skills, brushing up a lot.
A renaissance Montessori.
Yes.
So, oh, go ahead, Elizabeth. You're still with you?
Everybody's trying to do grace and courtesy, right?
There we go. Yeah, that's how we do it with little children. They raise their hands so they want to talk. I think a big word is weary. I mean, we're still at it and we're doing Zoom and we're doing Dojo. I just had a Zoom meeting with my six nursery staff and our associate head of school and everybody's great. I mean, they really are. They're doing a fantastic, fantastic job. But I, I think we all see a drop off in some of the attendance of the families. They're weary. Fortunately, the weather's getting a little bit better here finally. We're, we're outside of Boston and I think they're kind of just done. So you know, I'm waiting also on Monday when our governor rolls out phase one and phase two and phase three. I'm thinking it's a probable no for summer camp, which is a real shame because that's a real revenue stream for us. But we're looking ahead, I guess we'll look ahead towards the fall at that point. And, and the one positive thing is I think we're sending out a parent survey on Monday with the possibility of starting early, like maybe mid-August instead of after Labor Day to get, see if we can get back on track. But there's so many unknowns. So it's
Yeah, it's so fluid.
Hard to plan if you don't know what the parameters are going to be.
Yeah, you know, when you were talking about the summer program, some of the school heads that I've been talking with or we've been talking with, it's, it's kind of like a two-edged sword. On the one hand, revenue would be great for the summer. On the other hand, a lot of teachers need a break.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know. That's not really the case. My main, oh, here's my cat. My main concern is the safety, like as much as we need the revenue, can we do it safely? So you know, that remains to be seen.
Yeah. And then, then of course, there's the other issue between the revenue and the safety. Can you do it in a way that's developmentally appropriate for children? I mean, there's some of the things that we've talked about this before, the people are coming up with for young children in terms of distancing and masks and hula hoops. It's like, wait a minute.
I know.
How Montessori can we be with those?
I know, I know.
We were just talking about that in the staff Zoom, which was buggy, but we were talking about that in the staff Zoom and, and about the possibility of not having anything over the summer and spending the summer figuring out the fall, figuring out the developmental, figuring out what the classroom is going to look like, figuring out if there are components they're going to need to do at home and figuring out how we can close on a dime and shift gears should this come back around. So, and I think that's part of the weary. You know, we got through all of this and we got through it well, but now there's a whole bunch more that's just waiting. And I think that's what gets really tiring.
Yep. I hear you.
How about some of you other folks? How are you doing? What are you thinking? What are you planning?
We're doing fine. We're crawling to the end of our school year. Next week is the last week of our scheduled school year. And then we have one week, which we call wrap-up week with just the teachers. And then, so June 1 starts our summer break, which won't be a break for all of us. I think the teachers are very anxious to go on break and can't wait. We decided to cancel our summer programs, except for, usually we don't have much interest in elementary in the summer, our childcare program. This year, when I sent out a survey, it was actually many of our older elementary students that were really interested, the families and kind of online enrichment programs, like from our specialists, like our art teacher, music teacher. So we put together, we're putting together a schedule. It's kind of late getting out because this thing starts June 8. But we'll see, we'll see if the people that said they wanted something a few days a week, you know, and so we just decided a price point for it and they can sign up for one workshop or another workshop will run, you know, each workshop will be once a week for seven weeks, like an hour workshop followed by whatever the teachers want to send home that they can do on their own. So we'll see. It's a little experiment.
Everybody's experimenting these days.
Yeah. People sign up for it. But yeah, the, the summer, you know, it's overwhelming, a little overwhelming. We're taking it a day at a time, but the summer planning is, it's a little overwhelming. All of the things everyone else has been saying about preparing for either being online or being at school with a lot of changes. And we have a lot of staff that have signed up to actually be on a planning committee for the summer and some parents also. So we feel like we've got some support for that. It doesn't fall on just a few people on the admin team to figure it out.
And I've heard that from several of you so far. I think it's so great to bring staff into these conversations because they need to feel an ownership of this process and it gets, it allows us to really take the pulse of the teachers, you know, when we hear them talking about it. If we try to make a decision above the staff, we may be only looking at it from the standpoint of enrollment or parent satisfaction, you know, or, 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 you know, and, and we really have to keep, keep our eye on the teachers to see how they're doing and what their thoughts are because they're the key to the success of the program.
Yeah. And we did get our PPP loan, but it's unfortunately our eight weeks falls in June, you know, part of our eight weeks falls in June where we normally have a cutback on staff. So we're kind of trying to figure out all of that now too, how to meet, meet those numbers that the PPP requires.
They are looking at making changes. They're looking at extending it because they're realizing that with the timeframe they ended up with, it's not having the impact that they intended it to have. So hopefully they'll make changes because that was my thought too. I thought, oh, yay, we have it. Oh, man, bad timing. So hopefully they'll come through with those changes.
You can change your payroll dates, though. You can do that.
Tell me more about that.
So say, well, we go until the 19th of June and our pay, and our, we were paid every other week. So our, from when we got the loan on the 16th or whenever we got it in, in April, it was going to not cover, I'm not exactly sure, but not cover to finish out the school year. But, but I read online that you can change, say, every other week, you can change it to every week so that you could finish up the school year and not on the, on the front end and not the back end. But they don't really know. No one's going to know. I mean, it's all going to hand, it's all going to be on the backs of the, of the bankers and the loan people as to, you know, what's legit and what's going to be able to be paid back. I mean, no one really knows. It's so gray. I was talking to our accountant the other day and she's like, we don't even really know. I'm just keeping really good records and you know, everything is really organized and I have its own ledger and in QuickBooks and, and it is what it is.
Such an accurate way of describing, Elizabeth. One of the things that many schools do, and you might want to consider for the future, is take your nine or 10-month payroll pay and spread it out over 12 months so that even teachers that aren't continuing with you have a steady stream of income over an entire 12 months series.
We do give them that option if they choose to. Some of them do, some of them don't.
Yeah, we give that option. The thing that's a challenge for us is the part-time people because we don't have a lot of work for like our aftercare people and things like that. The teachers do spread their salaries out. So we have plenty of people getting paid through June, even though they, they're only working through May. But yeah.
One of the things you may, one of the things you may want to all have your CPAs look into is what's called the safe harbor rule. And the last reading that I got from the National Association of CPAs was that, that SBA was declaring that any business whose PPP loan was under $2 million is assumed to have complied with the conditions. So that may be true, it may not be true, but it was something from an authoritative source that I want to take a look at.
There were some articles on that, including Forbes yesterday.
And I mean, we're all honest people. So you know, we're going to keep, you know, it honest, but you know, there's a lot of people out there that aren't going to keep it honest. And I think that's
That's true.
Be a problem. Do the best we can do, you know?
Kim, Claudia, Liza, David, anything you want to chime in with or share with us?
We, I think, we sound like we're on the flip end of some of these stories where our governor, we're starting phase two on, to Monday.
And where are you again located, David? I forgot.
Right outside of Houston. So we're looking at opening up on June 1. So our parent population and most of our staff are kind of in the place of, for the love of God, please get us back into the classrooms with all the protocols in place, safety first. So we run, our school runs a 10-month program or a 12-month program. And I'm one of the teachers that runs the elementary 12-month program. So for us, we're looking at what, what do we need to do to be safe and responsible? What do we also need to do to accommodate what we're expecting right now? We're sending out surveys next week, but we're expecting our elementary camp will probably be fuller than it ever has been because most of our parents at this point are like, for the love of God, please just, can we go back to work? Because we, in Texas, half of our elementary parents have already gone back to work physically into their buildings. So we, so now we're seeing parents that are hiring babysitters facilitating these Zoom calls. So we are seeing kind of lack of attendance because we end our school, our spring semester ends next week. So we're seeing some kids like this, like parents like, you know, we're trying to do what we can do, but we're kind of just done and we're honoring whatever comes our way. So we're just gearing up for what does, and our summer program isn't really like camps or anything. It's really just, it's continued school. So it's really just, we just keep on going where we go. So we're just waiting to look at what do we need to do to be ready for children in the classroom come June 1. Our lower L program runs about 40 kids during the school year and about 30 in our upper L. So we're looking at more than probably half for both environments to come back for the summer. So we're like, how do we social distance? What are our protocols? And there are some things coming down the pipeline that we're hearing that are like, you know, childcare, good luck doing social distancing and sanitizing, like do your best that you can do. And fortunately, we're run really well and we know we can do what we have to do for safety and we want to follow the protocol. And our parents are really trusting of that. So we're just, I, we're just kind of ready to come back, if that makes sense. I don't know.
Can I ask a question, David? Have you looked at those new CDC guidelines that came out yesterday about the distancing and stuff?
I am very sure that Patty Solbman has. She probably looked at them the second they came out and then memorized the whole thing. So she probably already has written a handbook about what to do. So yeah, that, that's just her. So yeah, so I'm not sure. We're, she's pretty much of the place of the second, I know what we need to do. We are going to do everything above and beyond what we're supposed to do. So I haven't seen it yet. I'm just kind of following her lead on that end. But
What were you referring to, Claudia?
Well, the CDC just finally yesterday released guidelines for schools and they, they hadn't done that before and people were, and a lot of the different folks that I've been meeting with, whether it be these kinds of meetings or just my one-on-one consultant position things, everybody's kind of been going, we're not sure what is the thing that's going to keep people safe. And one of the meetings like this that I was on this week, one of the administrators was in a state that they just were basically going to, everything was going to start up. I mean, the movie theaters and restaurants and bars and we're just going to back, going to go back. And there was no, no real restrictions. It was all put on each individual person. And when I asked the question about liability, if they had considered the potential liability, she, I don't think she had really thought about it because she didn't feel like she lived in a litigious state. And that seemed, I guess, I followed up with a question about capacity, like, well, let's just say that you did end up with a lawsuit. What's your capacity for dealing with such a lawsuit? And I mean, I guess all of us would like to think that our families won't go there, but we also know
I think that's something we need to consider, for sure.
You know, the, the whole trick of all this is you have to look, if you picture almost a pie chart, you have to look at multiple perspectives. You have to look at, at what is physically safe for children in terms of health, what's physically doable for children, you know, that's reasonable for children that doesn't completely freak them out, like toddlers with masks that they can't see other people's faces or, or people see their faces. You know, you have to look at the impact upon parents and their, their, how they're going to feel about these accommodations. You have to look at the impact on teachers and how they're going to be handled, handling these accommodations. You have to look at the developmental impact, like, well, what's appropriate for different age children if we do this kind of distancing? And one of the things, the discussions that came up recently, while I was involved in with some Montessorians is if Montessori is about movement, you know, we have to allow children to move and yet we've got social distancing. So it's like, you've got to keep your eye on multiple perspectives. Otherwise, you're going to, we're going to make a myopic decision. It might, we might make a decision on legal, on legal parameters, but forget about the child's social emotional health or how are parents going to view this? Or can staff even do this? I mean, how are teachers going to give lessons and then sanitize every two minutes? I mean, is this really doable? Unless we ask all those questions, we're going to come up with really imbalanced answers. It's either going to put people's health at risk, put, put teachers at risk of burning out, or put the school at legal risk, or enrollment tuition dollars risk, or unhappy parents risk, as you like. It's, it's like, and it's hellacious for administrators, but unless we keep this as a sort of a holistic inquiry, I think, you know, and it's, it's interesting because doesn't this mirror exactly what the federal government should be doing and is not doing? I don't want to wax political here, but I don't know if you saw by chance, Claudia, if anybody saw, and last night on CNN or MSNBC, Andrew Cuomo presented his metrics of return to, you know, normal operations in the state. And there's like six different metrics. The counties and areas of New York cannot go back into operation until they fulfill all these criteria. And he's looked at it very holistically, which is, and scientifically.
I think that's part of the problem is that every state is dealing with a different political climate. It's still, every state is dealing with different government, you know, the government is, is sometimes at odds. I had, I had a person from Arizona on one, on the call along with a person from Michigan that couldn't be more different, different in terms of the politics of the, of the local area. But I think that, so, so my sense was that the most important thing is that we, we, if we can be that support for these parent, these teacher, administrators and their teachers is to get them just like the full gamut of information and let them kind of sort it out based on their own communities. I was surprised that, that, that folks out West didn't seem to know about the recent cases of children that had gotten, had, had things that, that, and I, I didn't hear what you're talking about with Andrew Cuomo, but I heard something that he spoke about with children and how all of a sudden, it's just like a moving target. And, you know, you think it's only going to be old people and then you think it's going to be, well, it could be younger and, oh, now it's children too. And then the, the symptoms look different in children than they do in adults. So, so I think that's one, one piece of, of way I think we can be supportive is to just keep getting information out. And not, not validating it or any of that, but just sharing it. To that end, I put the CDC, I put the CDC information
Yeah, thank you. Rivera?
One of the things that I've been really concerned about, and we did not have a good plan for redundancy when we did our very quick turnaround to online instruction of making sure that one teacher, for example, could take over another teacher's online classroom if, or spread the kids out between a few different classrooms if someone got sick. But that's a very, once things open up again, that's a huge reality that we have to have a plan for. And in a normal year, subbing is one of our biggest nightmares. When a teacher gets sick, it's what's going to
Everybody's head is going like this.
Definitely.
I mean, in a normal year, but to plan for that possibility, that what if one of the teachers or key administrators or someone got sick, it would be very devastating. And what we're seeing is how long this, you know, even if people get over the initial, like my niece got sick and she has two young children and had to be isolated in her, one side of her home while her husband was with the kids on the other side. But, you know, she was a very strong young lady and she ended up still, you know, a month later, she's
I think that's a really brilliant leadership question that you've brought up is, is asking yet another question. So what is our backup system if one of our staff got sick? And I would like to broaden that out and suggest, it's not only COVID-19 sick, what if our, what if one of our, one of our teachers just needs a break because they're just so burned out? I think we need to build in the possibility of giving people some respite and build that into the model. Elizabeth?
And if you have a nine to one ratio, it's tricky. It's more tricky for us because when we have a sub, the sub comes in, whoever's in the, normally in the classroom takes the class. So it could be the assistant taking the class, the sub comes in under. Now you, if it's a 10 in a room ratio, you've probably got one adult. So the number of people qualified to seamlessly take over a class is very, very small. OSHA addressed in their information online, it wasn't for kids or clients, but they had for workers and what the legal liability was for businesses. And it was basically, it looks like if you're acting in good faith, if you're acting in good faith and you're doing your best, you're not legally liable for what that's worth. But that's what they have laid out so far.
You know, one of the discussions that I heard in, and I don't remember which school talked about this, might have been one of your schools, but the idea of if you can budget for it, having a floater who is simply the person who sanitizes. So we're not, we're not asking teachers to give lessons and take care of children's social emotional needs and then run around and sanitize materials, that you actually have some designated people or a person to handle that, to free the teachers up to just be in tune with the children and to present as many lessons as you can. And I really think that's, if it's, if you can budget for that, I think that's a brilliant strategy. I'm very concerned about teacher overload when we go back into operation with social distancing. Kim, we haven't
One of the things, Claudia, just real quick, one of the things you said was about, oh, no, I lost it, teacher overload.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
I'll come back to it. It'll come back eventually. Sorry.
Kim, anything you want to chime in here?
So I know in our state in Maryland, MSTE hasn't been very responsive and there's a lot of early childhood providers that are really upset. They have no guidance even. We were expecting something come out today from Dr. Salmon and apparently she's not making the announcement until Monday. But I think from what I'm understanding with Maryland State Childcare Administration is, there's going to be a second phase of opening for childcare centers, whatever, that want to serve the, the emergency personnel children. And so I'm assuming that could be fairly soon. You'd have to put an application in, but they turn it around pretty quickly. But still, there's no, all these questions, just like what we've been talking about, there's just no real guidance. And I think the, the long and short of it is that in our profession, in our industry, in early childhood, we're feeling very disrespected and kind of just floundering for ourselves, you know? I mean, I'm grateful that I have the community of, of IMC and other organizations, my local organizations and other, so I'm pretty plugged in and I get a lot of information. But it's really unfortunate that our, our local office of childcare and our state of Maryland federal government hasn't done anything really to guide us.
You know, I, thank you. I once heard Alfie Kohn, you know, the Punished by Rewards author and other great stuff, say that when you leave educational policy in the hands of legislators and bureaucrats, including early, you know, some, you know, at the like state licensing level bureaucrats, they don't understand the needs of children or parents or teachers. And, and some of the things that I've seen, and I think if Cindy Acker were here, she could probably speak to this. If you see something that you think people who are setting policy, either medical policy or, or whatever kind of policy, that you don't think it's in the best interest of children or teachers to deliver learning or, or safety, it's our job to advocate back to them and said, have you guys considered this? I think sometimes we in Montessori have lived in our own little bubble and have forgotten, if we want to change policy out there, including in times of crisis, we need to have a voice. And, and it could be one voice writing to a legislator saying, look, this is untenable. You have to look at it from this perspective in terms of what's healthy for the family, healthy for the child and legally safe for schools. That sometimes could be a benefit to people who are just not thinking that way.
Again, I'm outside of Boston and I think the state of Massachusetts, they had, EEC had a town hall last week or two weeks ago with a ton of questions. And they said to us, give us two weeks and we're having another town hall, I'm going on the webinar on Tuesday. And they hope to have a bunch of answers. And I mean, they had some really good questions and they have a committee, a bunch of educators and administrators working on this. And I am going to look to them for guidance from them, from the CDC and also the local board of health.
Truly responsible.
Yeah, I'm hoping. I'll, I'll let you guys know if I, I'm sure there'll be something valuable there.
Liza, anything you want to share with us?
I, I'm listening to all of this and I'm in New York and I'm, Mario Cuomo, we're sitting here, we have no idea, nothing. I mean, I hit a CDC, I've been listening to everyone, but nothing. We're getting nothing from anyone that's telling us even a little as to what they think they're going to want us to do. So I reached out to the Department of Health. So they told me, hand in your camp papers. I was like, hand in my camp papers. There's no word that we're going to open school at all, let alone camp. She's like, well, but you should have it in. So I hand in the camp papers and she says to me, where's your trip schedule? I said, where's my trip schedule? They're not even going to open the schools. Do you think we're going to have camp? She said, no, but you have to have it in your file.
That's a very big example.
I had to do the whole thing, my whole packet. And they have no idea. And they say they have no idea, but they want the package.
That's exactly what I did. And I said And I send in the camp papers, she said, I said, but none of these, you know, trip, trip schedules. So the aquarium's not open, the zoo's not open, but send it in anyway. Okay, so I said, well, since I'm, I have you on the phone, can you tell me what is the New York Department of Health thinking? Are you going to come out and look at the school? What should we do? We don't know. Well, if you don't know, how are we supposed to know? So my parents, I had a parent this morning who said, can't you just open now? I need my kids to go back to school. Well, but they don't either understand.
Well, you know
They have no idea that
No, they don't. Completely overwhelmed. But that's why I think we, that you administrators or we administrators need to be really proactive and sit down with our staff and go, look, we're going to do, we have no idea what, what the government, the feds, the municipal, the state governments are going to do in there, you know, they're as overload as everybody. Let's, let's have our own proactive discussion on, in different scenarios, totally open, partially open, distancing, let's talk about what's best for children, best for teachers, and how we can maintain the trust of our parents. Those are proactive discussions. So it's like, we, we don't know whether we're going to be put, able to put any of these plans in place, but we've had that discussion. So when something does start to trickle down from, you know, on a government level, you've already given it some thought. It's what John Mon, Dr. John Moncur in his scenario planning talk calls, have your trigger points. You know, it goes in this direction, we're going to pull that trigger and we're going to do that plan. And you've developed that somewhat in advance with the staff. So we're not sitting passively by waiting for the bureaucrats to come up with something because they may not, they may delay and they may come up with something that's completely myopic and doesn't serve children, Montessori, parents, teachers, or schools.
And I think it's going to be more complex. I remembered what I lost. We were talking, when she was talking about different states opening with different parameters, one of the things that struck me last night when they were showing Wisconsin that had opened and people were in bars without any safety measures in place is this could, we're pretty much anticipating a second wave.
Oh yeah.
It could come around faster. If, if states are going to open, a lot of this, well, a number of the states are opening before the decline or plateau. If they're going to open fast and people just travel, this may come back around sooner rather than later. So we're going to start talking sooner rather than, sooner than I would have anticipated about what next year is going to look like and getting all the phases in place. I thought we'd take a bit of respite, but if it comes back around quickly, we might not have time.
Well, I, I think you raised a really key point that sort of, I think we, Montessori needs to again, make sure that we are referencing what's happening in the macro world. One of the charts that Rachel Maddow did last night, she showed the New York curve really steeply going down and, and Andrew Cuomo putting all these metrics of when your county can open. And then she showed the incredible rising rate of infections and deaths in Texas, Wisconsin, several other Midwest states with the meatpacking plants. Those people are opening up. So if I'm a school administrator, I'm not only going to look at what's best for my children, my staff, my parents, but I'm also going to look at what's the curve doing in my state? Do I really want to bring children back on here when the curve is going up because the state's opening too quickly? So they may recommend that we open up and I might want to open up for, you know, to serve children, serve, serve parents and bring in income, but if the, if the curve is going this way, whoa, that's really dangerous.
Yes, I've read that the national curve is misrepresented, misrepresented because New York has been so big.
Yes.
And so New York is going down and it's making the whole country look like it's plateauing, but it's the only state that's going down.
Exactly right.
You know, so it makes, it look like the country's plateauing or going down. But if you take New York out, the rest of the country's on a spike.
True. David, were you going to mention something?
Yeah, I was gonna, but the, um, I was, I was going to mention the beforehand, I, the spikes and all that stuff, it's just, I, I'm just grateful I don't have to think of the extent of that. But, um, beforehand, the proactive part, I think that, um, what you were saying earlier, Jonathan, about the full-time staff member, that is, that is something that we are doing. We're bringing in the extended care staff and they're coming in hours earlier and they will be full-time sanitizing throughout the day.
Awesome.
Certain ones in different rooms and, uh, we have them zoned in different environments.
Yeah.
But one of the other things that we're talking about as a staff is this flipping thing, right? Like a second wave coming. So we're starting to go to, we're going to go to Moodle and videotape all of our lessons and things like that. And we're preparing like at-home things already that's going to go like a sanitized tub. So we're ready to go. So we're using this summer also to start preparing for second wave, right? So we're, um, we're already finessing what we can do. And Tim, you're probably nodding because I'm sure you and Ms. Patty have already been talking about all of this.
Yeah, but it's what, what I would definitely recommend do if they can. Um, I suspect we're going to see, I know the Guidepost Montessori has got their, their homeschool branches trying to prepare a whole program that schools could buy into. Um, my own experience, David, is that the best thing is when it's done by the child's teachers. You mix, blend of live and canned, feed it out in a structured way in a learning platform. Moodle is a good choice or Google Classroom. And Google Classroom for a lot of schools might be, uh, the better choice, uh, just because it's so simple. That and CSO. So if you're not familiar with those two particular platforms, they're really good. But there's a bunch of ways to do it. The, the key is the emotional connection, the parent aggravation, um, doing the best we can. I mean, I really appreciate what everyone is saying. I think we're struggling with, will we get sued? And the answer is, who knows? Ultimately, all you can do is the best you can.
Yeah, I, I want to address that. I, the schools, and this, this is just sort of psych, I'm a lot of lawyer, like Tanya Reiskin, the associate head of school of Newgate, Tim's compatriot, but it feels to me that the schools are, that are bending over backwards to continue children's learning at home, to support parents at home, to really be there for parents, like let us know how you're doing at home and how we can help you with your parenting. Uh, the schools that are showing some tuition flexibility within reason for parents, in other words, the schools that are, are, are helping parents feel that the school is indispensable to the survival of the family, those people are not going to be litigious, they're not going to, they're not going to sue the school. You know? If, if, even if a child comes down or our staff member comes down with COVID-19, if, if the school has presented itself as a tremendous sort of life-saving service to the family, I think it low, psychologically it lowers the risk of people being antagonistic to school. And I'm not suggesting we don't need to think about legal risks and exposure, especially when we bring kids back and staff back and do the social distancing. But I also don't think we should, if we've done a good job supporting parents through this online time and supporting kids, I think parents are going to look very favorably toward the school and, and work with us as partners. At least that's my hope. Claudia?
I, I would hope that as well, and, but I
I was surprised with one of the administrators I spoke with yesterday who, um, was taken aback after all the efforts they had made, that when they had a family where they gave options for, um, taking a reduced tuition and so on, he had a board member who literally pulled their kids out of the school. And, and, you know, I, I spoke with him about the fact that, you know, that may seem like a, a good thing, a bad thing, I don't know, but, but it's an opportunity to take a look at your board and take a look at, at where the board falls on, um, on a whole realm of issues that maybe had never really presented itself. And just start those conversations. I mean, you just, conversation, conversation, conversation. You got to talk about all this stuff.
You know, what you're bringing up is the whole idea of whether it's with children when they come back, or even before they come back, or with our staff, is the question, what did we learn that can make us better human beings? What did we learn that can make us better teachers and better parents? In other words, the, you know, the reptilian and the limbic brain will tend to go through the tragedy side of all this. Oh my God, oh my God, you know, what, what happened, what's happening, what might happen? And, yeah, people need to be able to process that. That's good listening. But I also think we need to, as, as school leaders, we need to create a paradigm of like, okay, we've been through a difficult time, what did we learn? What, what did, and giving people a chance that what did you learn about yourself and your own emotional responses to loss and grieving or to creativity? What did we learn as a staff? What did, what did we learn about parenting? So it's, you're creating a, a learning environment out of tragedy as opposed to woe is me. I had one other thought that I wanted to, uh, ask you about, see what your impressions are. And it's, it's staff self-care. What do you think about a school in which you have invited your assistants or some of your assistants, as David was talking about at Pines, Patty Sobelman's school and David's school? Certain assistants are tasked with doing the, you know, the hygiene. Remember assistants too are educators. They're a vital part of the community. I would hope that there could be a discussion in schools, do we rotate around not only the assistant sanitizing, but occasionally, maybe the assistant gets to hang out with the kids and give as many lessons in practical life or whatever. And for one day, the teachers do the sanitizing. In other words, it's a distributed load, so you don't have one or two assistants simply doing the menial job of sanitizing all the time. Because my fear of doing that is again, they're going to burn out. As I, I didn't join early childhood or elementary education to sanitize schools for three months. So I just think it's something we need to look at. What is the effect upon this assistant if this is their only role? And is there a way to make that more equitable and spread the load? So we value everybody as educators, but people are also willing to drop their educational role and help out on the health side.
Well, I mean, I imagine everyone that's sitting here has done everything, like from cleaning toilet. You know, I mean, I, I, when I'm thinking about
Throw up, don't forget to throw up diarrhea.
I'm, I'm thinking myself, I'm going to be the cleaning person because they are busy. So I mean, one more thing, how am I going to fit all the cleaning in? But, you know, yeah, I, I think it's really important for, you know, nothing is below me, I'm right there in the trenches with them.
Well, and I think it's important that they see leaders do that too, but, but we also need to watch for burnout too. Because you've got, you've got strategy to think about for the future and we're, you know, we could be running around, you know, cleaning toilets all day long.
I know. We've seen some of our assistants have been the ones that were really rocking it on the online learning.
Yep.
Um, they were really the ones that had a lot of creativity and, and skills that our teachers didn't have.
Yeah.
And it did lift them up quite a bit too.
Well, and, and knowing you, Nervére, I'm sure you acknowledge them for that. And I, I think to me, that's another part of creating a positive environment in really tragic times, you know, looking for opportunities to thank teachers, assistants, parents, children for stepping up and being bigger and better human beings. I think it's so easy to get sucked into the vortex of all the problems we have to solve, these strategic problems we've been talking about. And we start to lose sight of those little mindful moments where we go up to somebody and go, Tim, I really appreciated how you handled that. You know, and I think we need to create that, continue that culture of appreciation, which is a counterpoint to all the darkness around us.
I was joking with one of my staff on our Zoom meeting an hour or so ago, that we're going to lose her to WGBH because she's going to become Mrs. Rogers. She's really taking this on, she's doing a fantastic job and she's one of our aides, but she's just, she's made her whole school, her whole living room into a little school and she's making up songs and it really is great to see.
That's nice. We got about four or five minutes left.
One of the things, one of the things I wanted to share that came out of another conversation was, um, in one of the states, they're saying that they can't have any additional adults but one in the classroom with the children. And we talked about, you know, who was going to sanitize if they can't bring some, an adult in? Is the teacher going to have to do that while? And, and one of the thoughts was put some assistants in key places outdoors, um, so they could take the children out, that would give the teacher a break, the teacher could sanitize, and then the assistant or even a different teacher, you know, just kind of leveling the playing field, the way you were saying, Jonathan, with giving the assistant responsibilities for teaching or the co-teacher or whatever, but maybe in just a different location, which then the, the children might be able to move around, but the adults can't. So, um, that might be another solution.
That's very creative, Claudia, I love that. Anybody have any other questions, concerns, needs, things they want to share that might help the group?
No, but this is very good. I thought this was great.
I will only say, having survived a number of recessions and crises over almost 50 years, taking care of yourselves and making sure you don't get caught up in the minutia or the cleaning up of the diarrhea or burning out is absolutely vital because, you know, it can't be done by one of us alone, but we have to lead and keep the rest of the group sane. It's create a circle of partners is the goal, but you really are the, the lead, like a monastery educator with children. So take care of yourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know about everybody else, but this is how I take care of myself best. This is my favorite Friday afternoon time. And it's a really, all of these are just really helpful and energy producing. So, thank you, and they help with my sanity.
Well, thank you, Lisa, it's always good to see you. Most of you guys have been regulars at this thing, so it's nice. So I have a little invitation, I don't know if you saw it on the urgent news and announcements, but in about, uh, three hours, a little over three hours, Andrew Cutt, Tanya Reiskin and I are going to do a world event called May the Farce Be With You. It's going to be about an hour of little crazy Montessori merriment. Well, it'll, I'll just give you a few of the crazy things we're going to do just to create some lightness, you know, with all this darkness. We're going to invite people to brainstorm and we're also going to give them a list of very, very famous historical or fictional characters in history, whether it's Napoleon or Mahatma Gandhi or Marie Curie or Maria Montessori. And we're going to ask people, what would they have been like in a Montessori classroom? You know, uh, last time we did this at an IMC conference, somebody suggested Mahatma Gandhi was incredible Montessori student, but he spent his whole time at the peace table. Never wanted to leave the peace table. So we're going to do that exercise, we're going to do an exercise, a little game called, um, what if all of Montessori's terminology, like three-period lessons and sensitive periods and absorbent mind, what if all of that was mistranslated from the Italian? And she said, none of those things. Andrew Cutt, when we did this, came up with one that she never talked about normalization. That was completely mistranslated. It was normal hydration, keep the children watered. So we're going to, and then we're going to do a Montessori Jeopardy game. Uh, so if you can make it in three hours at seven o'clock Eastern time, it, it should be a really, really fun event just to create a little bit of craziness and sort of have a Friday night party. So, hope you can join us.
Sounds good.
And again, thank you for all the incredible, incredible work you're doing with your children, your parents and your staff. I, I admire all of you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you tonight.
All right, well, have a great weekend. Be safe.
Bye, be well, everybody. Get rest.